Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the April meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the proposed minutes of our March 9 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes of the March 9 meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as submitted stand adopted upon unanimous consent.
Mr. Moderator, town officials, members and guests. On March 9, the members of District 12 were saddened to learn of the loss of a former member and friend with the passing of Donald Kiefer. Born in Patterson, New Jersey, Don earned a BA in economics from Colgate University. He went on to earn advanced degrees at the Columbia School of Law and the Graduate School of Taxation at NYU. Don had a 50-year career as an attorney. In the corporate world, he specialized in international mergers and acquisitions while working at Emanol and Mobil Oil. Don moved to Greenwich in 1977 and in 1980 established his own practice here. Don gave much of his time in service to the Greenwich community. One of his favorite sayings was, "If you don't like the way things are going, then get involved." He served for 18 years on the RTM as a member of District 12. He was the district's delegate to the Budget Overview Committee, the Community Development Committee, and the Legislative and Rules Committee, which he chaired from 1996 until 2000. Don was a member of the Republican Town Committee. In 1994, he was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals and served for 18 years, 12 of them as its chairman. Donald was an outdoorsman, enjoying golf, sailing, hunting, fishing, and skiing. An avid fly fisherman, Don was active in the Mayanist chapter of Trout Unlimited. He was a longtime member of the Riverside Yacht Club, where he enjoyed competing in the Block Island and Vineyard Haven yacht races. In recognition of his lengthy service to the town of Greenwich, First Selectman Peter Tessie proclaimed March 21, 2012, as Donald Kiefer Day. I think that my own lasting memory of Don will be his quick wit and easy smile. As a district and community, we will miss his friendship and wise counsel. District 12 asks the members of this body to join them in recognizing his service to the town and the many other contributions made by Donald Kiefer for the betterment of the Greenwich community. In his honor, we ask that these comments be included in the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Will the members please rise in memory of Don Kiefer? That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs today that, based upon the reports received, I would recommend the following organization of our call tonight. I will shortly designate the following items to be placed on our consent calendar, which means that if they remain on that calendar, we will hear no committee reports and there will be no discussion on them. Those will be Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 8, and 15. I will then recommend that the following items be combined for voting purposes. Those will be Items 3, 9 through 13, leaving to be considered separately Items 6, 7, 14, and 16 through 20. So, at this point, I will now designate the following six items for our consent calendar. Item number 1, a resolution appointing David Ormsby to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 2, a resolution appointing James Dougherty to be a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 4, a resolution appointing Alan Gunsberg to be a regular member of the Board of Social Services with a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 5, a resolution appointing Thomas Zack to be a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board with a term expiring March 31, 2019. Item 8 is a resolution appointing Paul DeBarry to be a member of the Board of Ethics with a term expiring March 31, 2018. And the last item that I am now designating for our consent calendar is Item 15, which is a resolution accepting a grant of $12,000 from the Asia Society for Confucius Classroom in the Greenwich Public Schools. Is there any objection to the designation of those six items to our consent calendar? Hearing none, will our district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar items 1, 2, 4, 5, 8, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. At this time, I will recommend that we combine Items 3 and 9 through 13 for voting purposes. That requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine Items 3 and 9 through 13 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules in order to combine Items 3 and 9 through 13 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. So, we will take up the combined items first, and when we have disposed of them, we will then pick up the separate items, which will be 6, 7, 14, and 16 through 20. So, may we have Item 3, please. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Item number 3, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Board of Social Services for a term expiring 3/31/18. Lauren E. Raben.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. Candace Garthwaite, the Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Good evening. The Appointments Committee met with Lauren Raben on March 24. All districts were represented. The vote was 12-0-0. Lauren is an enthusiastic and passionate member of the Board. She speaks highly of the work of the Board and particularly mentioned how Dr. Barry is proven to be a fine leader of the department. She's encouraged about the focus of helping people attain self-sufficiency and learning how to secure employment. So, the Board has definitely been helping with workshops toward that mission. She also mentioned the work of the Community Partnership Program, and she sees the Board of Social Services as a hub for evaluating and referring folks to existing services. More and more, they're taking a holistic view of people and the community and looking to see if they can get at some of the roots of problems. Lauren's own work as a Director of Marketing and Enterprise Software has proved to be very valuable to the Board. Recently, she played a very large role in selecting and implementing a new case management system that took nine months from start to finish. So, that's a great accomplishment and very helpful for the department. Challenges that she mentioned included the importance of securing funding for a counselor in Western Middle School this year. I believe that's in conjunction with kids in crisis. Lauren also wants to emphasize the importance of communicating with the RTM and all members of the community to understand some of the challenges that members of our community endure when it comes to dealing with financial issues, mental health issues, family health, and domestic violence. Again, the vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Tom Canilius, Vice Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee.
Health and Human Services met last Tuesday with Mrs. Raben. I won't go into anything else that the Chairwoman of the Appointments already did. The vote was 11-0-0 with District 2 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 3. Item 9 now comes before us. I believe this is, this was postponed from our March meeting, is that correct? So, it is now currently before us. All right. This is a resolution to appoint Carl Carlson, Dr. Carl Carlson, Jr., to be a member of the Condemnation Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2016. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Candace Garthwaite.
So, I will be making the motion. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Condemnation Commission for a term expiring 3/31/16.
All right. When we postpone them and then reach them, we don't need the motion. It's just automatically before us.
I don't need these.
All I need is the committee reports.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Carl Carlson met with our committee, as did all the nominees, on February 3. 11 districts were represented. District 3 was absent. The nominees for Condemnation Commission were selected by ballot. A total of 11 votes was possible, and a majority of six votes was required. So, the vote will not be in your usual format. Dr. Carlson received seven votes. Dr. Carlson, as many of you know, is a member of District 1 and a longtime resident of Greenwich. He is a delegate to the Appointments Committee as well. He views himself as an independent thinker in matters as serious as condemnation and feels that his longtime knowledge of the Greenwich Commercial District is important to the work of the Condemnation Commission. Dr. Carlson received a master's degree and a PhD in mathematics from Stanford University.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. I reported on all of the Condemnation Commission appointments last month. We had some confusion with the date, you'll recall. We interviewed the, all of the appointees as a group. On Mr., I'll give you the vote on Mr. Carlson. It was 10 in favor, none opposed. District 10 was absent. District 2, which is, Mr. Carlson recused himself because he is a nominee. So, that was 10 in favor, none opposed. All of the, all of the appointments to the Condemnation Commission are members of the RTM.
All right. Thank you. Discussion on Item 9. All right. Why don't I, at this time, just put the remaining combined items before us? These are Items 10, 11, 12, 13, since it seems they were all taken up together. These are all resolutions appointing the following individuals to be members of the Condemnation Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2016. The Item 10 is Donald Conway. Item 11 is Jackie Hammack. Item 12 is Jude Collins. And Item 13 is Paul Settlemeyer. So, why don't we now get the committee reports on that group? Candace Garthwaite with the Appointments Committee report.
Okay. So, I can just go ahead, I'll just go ahead with Jude Collins. He received 11 votes. I also reported on him briefly last time. Mr. Collins is clearly very enthusiastic about his work as a career, as a real estate appraiser. He specializes in commercial properties, industrial properties, apartment buildings, and vacant land sites. He's a certified appraiser in the states of Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey. He holds an ASA designation from the American Society of Appraisers and has also been certified by the Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors. Mr. Collins also holds general certification issued by the Connecticut State, Connecticut Department of Transportation Right-of-Way Panel, and he's a certified eminent domain appraiser for the state of New York Transportation, Department of Transportation. So, our votes again were, it was 11 votes, and certainly he's a very valuable member of this commission. Do you want me to just go ahead with all of them?
All of them, yeah.
Okay. Donald Conway, on this particular item, it is a substitute resolution because it should read Donald R. Conway rather than Donald L. Conway. Mr. Conway, many of you know, he's a longtime resident of Greenwich. He's very involved in Greenwich overall. He does film the meetings for GCTV, and so he's well-versed on what goes on in town. He closely followed the North Mayanist sewer litigation, and he feels he learned the importance of good communication when dealing with Condemnation Commission issues. So, he definitely has the historic perception and perspective and sees that this role is vital, that someone understands the town in a holistic way. Jackie Hammack received 11 votes. Jackie is also a longtime resident of Greenwich. She's served 28 years as a Greenwich Realtor, and she has a real interest in digging into the details. For example, on a recent question, she went to Town Hall and researched all the tax records. Jackie likes doing this kind of thing. So, she's a valuable member of this commission for that reason, among many others. She has an undergraduate degree in accounting and finance and an MBA in marketing. She currently serves, has served as the Secretary and continues to serve as the Secretary of the Condemnation Commission. Paul Settlemeyer also received 11 votes out of 11. He is an incumbent on this commission, and he previously represented Greenwich on the Board of the Southwest Regional Planning, the SWRPA, and so certainly gained a lot of experience there on issues that towns face. He has had a distinguished executive career in commercial banking and is well-versed in commercial real estate. So, he also is a very fine member of the Condemnation Commission. Again, the vote was 11 votes.
Thank you. And Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee on those four candidates.
So, our votes on the four candidates, on Mr. Conway was 10-0-1 and 1. He again, he also recused himself from voting on himself, so 10 in favor, none opposed. The same for Jackie Hammack, the same for Jude Collins. And on Paul Settlemeyer, Mr. Settlemeyer abstained on himself, so again, it was 10 in favor, zero opposed. District 10 was absent for all of the votes.
Thank you. Discussion on Items 10 through 13. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Combine calendar Items 3 and 9 through 13, and proceed to poll your delegation. Could we see the Chair of District 8, please? All right. That brings us now to the separate items. We will take up, we will take up Item 6 first, and I understand there is a motion to postpone to be offered. Well, if you think we can do these in a group, I will leave that to you. But Candace Garthwaite, well, first of all, I'm sorry. No, 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 no. This has to be, come before us. May we have the resolution? Peter Tessie, our First Selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring 3/31/18. John B. Morgenot, Jr.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 6 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this item? Candace Garthwaite with the report of the Appointments Committee.
Mr. Morgenot was unable to make this meeting, so we will be making a motion to postpone. The Appointments Committee combined those items in a motion. Do you want me to put that motion forward as?
Well, this is, this is different because the last five items for Condemnation originated within the RTM. So, we're going to have to get the resolutions from...
Okay. So, we'll do them individually?
The nominating authority first.
All right. So, the Appointments Committee would make a motion to postpone Item 6 to the June meeting.
All right. You know what? You could make a motion. You could make a motion at this point to combine for voting purposes on a motion to postpone the items that you are going to move to postpone, which are 6, 7, and 16 through 20. All right. So, are you making such a motion?
I would make a motion to postpone Items...
No, no, no. To suspend the rules to combine...
To suspend the rules.
So that we can take up one, one vote on a motion to postpone, in other words. So, first, we're going to combine them.
Okay. So, I would make, yes.
All right.
We will suspend the rule.
Is there a second to the motion to suspend the rules? All right. It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine Items 6, 7, 16 through 20 for voting purposes. Once again, not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of combining 6, 7, 16, and through 20 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. All right. So, let's get all those items before us, and then we'll come back to you for a motion. Mr. Tessie?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a regular member of the Commission on Aging for a term expiring 3/31/18. Patricia Rand Burns.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 7 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Tessie?
Item 16, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed as a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/18. Hans Christian Thalheim.
And will a member please move the adoption of that? The resolution on Item 16 has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Tessie?
Item 17, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed as a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/18. Patrick Sline.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 17 has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Tessie?
Item 18, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed as a regular member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/18. Richard C. Low.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 18 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Tessie?
Item 19, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring 3/31/18. Richard Maitland.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution has, on Item 19 has been moved and seconded. And finally?
Item 20, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring 3/31/20. Katie Brown.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 20 has now been moved and seconded. So, the following items are now before us. Items 6, 7, and 16 through 20. So, Ms. Garthwaite.
The Appointments Committee moves to postpone Items 6, 7, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20 to the June meeting.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second. Discussion, I'm sorry. Yeah, discussion on the motion postpone?
Questions.
All right. This is a procedural matter, so I will take a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing Items 6, 7, and 16 through 20 to our June meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. That now leaves Item 14 for us. May we have the resolution on that? Denise Savageo, her Conservation Director.
Good evening. Resolve that the 2015 Open Space Plan, as approved by the Conservation Commission at its March 15, 2015 meeting, be adopted as an addendum to the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 14 has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took this item up last Monday evening. This request for approval of the Open Space Plan is made at the behest of the Conservation Director after its approval by Planning and Zoning. A new OSP was mandated by the 2009 POCD. This OSP comes to us now six years later. This item was primarily presented to us by Denise Savageo, Conservation Director for the town of Greenwich. We also heard from William Rutherford, Conservation Commission Chairman and Chairman of the committee that prepared the document. This OSP represents an update of the last one, which was approved by the RTM in 2002. The 2002 plan was the first in which the Geographic Information System, GIS, was utilized to identify and classify spatial and geographical data in the town. Ms. Savageo explained that the GIS transformed the way that the town looks at its open space resources and led to a categorization in the 2002 plan of all the properties as being either protected or unprotected. In the updated 2015 OSP, a new and better defined classification of open space has been created. The details of the classification system are laid out on page 46 of the document that we were mailed in the last call. Since 2002, the Conservation Commission and the town has classified the open space inventory differently and has identified and categorized the deed restrictions that are designed to maintain properties as protected open space. Going forward, it is intended that the town will create a database of all the deed restrictions so that the properties with or without deed restrictions can be identified and the specific nature of the restriction understood. The reclassification of the parcels has also led to the creation of the natural resource inventory, which is depicted as the map at the back of the booklet. Ms. Savageo explained there are some primary goals of the OSP. One, to protect open space through acquisition and placement of easements on targeted properties, which is designed to convert the unprotected category into a protected category. By reference to the natural resource map mentioned earlier, the goal is to turn as much red property as depicted on the map into green property. The goal is also to effectively manage open space and to educate private homeowners, property owners, about the OSP. Ms. Savageo pointed out the OSP is a planning document. It does not mandate any particular change, but is instead aspirational in nature. She handed out a frequently asked question document, which was attached to my report, which has been circulated. I won't go into those questions and answers. Ms. Savageo was asked to comment on whether a timetable on conversion of unprotected land to protected land was appropriate. She explained that trying to set a timetable on these conversions is impossible, and the Conservation Commission and the town must simply be ready to act when the opportunities arise. She pointed out that in order for the protection to be put in place, there must be a willing donor or willing seller to change the property from unprotected to protected. There followed a question about the 21% goal that is stated in OSP, that is, 21% of the property in Greenwich being protected space. Ms. Savageo explained that the 21% goal was in the prior OSP, and that 20% goal is also the goal set by the state of Connecticut. It is not a mandate, but the town deemed it a priority. It is not a mandate, but the town deemed it appropriate to adopt that percentage as well. She has acknowledged that the 21% goal is a lofty one. District 10 Representative John Lucarelli expressed some concern about the implementation of deed restrictions on open space, thereby reducing the grand list, thereby putting a greater burden on the rest of the town's taxpayers. Ms. Savageo pointed out that many of the 10-acre and larger woodlots in town are already protected by Public Act 490, which is a state statute which reduces the tax bills on these larger parcels. So, there's already a reduction in tax revenues in place on these larger parcels that are not currently restricted by easements. Our committee was then advised that the Land Use Committee was contemplating a motion to postpone indefinitely with the sense of the meeting resolution that would recommend certain changes to be made to the OSP. No one in our committee deemed that it would be necessary to make further changes or to support that motion. Our vote on the matter, we took two votes. Legal Order 12-0-0. On the merits, 12-0-0.
Thank you. Peter Berg with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee met last Monday night. All districts were represented. Conservation Director Denise Savageo and Chair of the Conservation Commission, Bill Rutherford, presented this item. Other members of the Conservation Commission attended in support of this item, as did the President and Executive Director of the Greenwich Land Trust. Ms. Savageo gave a detailed presentation of the proposed Open Space Plan, which will replace the 2002 plan. Categories of open space are refined. Protected properties are now separate from restricted. Properties with conservation easements now count only the easement instead of the entire property. A natural resources inventory is added. Implementation tasks are divided by two goals: permanent protection and management of open space. During the question-and-answer period, Ms. Savageo noted that the plan was essentially a blueprint with no specific action regarding any parcel of land. She emphasized that the 21% goal was lofty and could take 50 years to achieve. She noted that the acquisition of private property requires a willing seller or a donor, and it's not possible to predict when land is available. Ms. Savageo distributed a list of open space activities since the year 2000. It showed 177 acres since 2002, including 100 acres from subdivisions set asides: 28 acres at Caff Island, 30 acres at Tuckman, nine acres at Cosco Park, and four small parcels from the State Department of Transportation. In addition, the Greenwich Land Trust acquired 19 parcels, which Ms. Quinn estimated at 60 acres. Peter Berg, Chairman of the Land Use Committee, noted that the 21% goal requires an additional 3,500 acres of protected open space. He noted that 70 properties of 10 or more acres have sold since the RTM adopted the 2002 plan, and that nine more are currently on the market. He noted that the Land Use Committee has been supportive of the Conservation Commission's annual budget requests for staff, but that it clearly lacks the resources to implement the plan. Mr. Berg called for revisions to the plan to include, number one, a realistic and achievable 10-year interim goal; number two, a task to score all large properties in town; number three, a provision to report planned progress annually to the RTM; number four, inclusion of planned tasks in the Conservation Commission's annual operational plan; number five, reestablishment of a first selectman land acquisition committee to include representatives from the BET, the RTM, the Conservation Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, and others who have relevant skills and knowledge; and number six, inclusion of a land acquisition placeholder in our CIP capital plan. Paul Puglazie, Chair of the Architectural Review Committee, opposed the adoption of the plan. He noted that the plan was too loosely worded and that there was a lack of specifics regarding rights and restrictions. Our vote on the item was 11 to 1. The delegate from District 8, that would be me, voted no, saying that without the revisions he proposed, it was not a serious or realistic plan.
Thank you. All right. I understand one of our districts has a motion addressed to this. Joan Caldwell, Chair of District 10. While we're waiting, let me just announce the vote on the combined calendar... I'm sorry. This would be the... Oh, we didn't get the consent calendar vote, did we? All right. I have the result of the vote on the combined calendar items. Those were Items 3 and 9 through 13. Those in favor, 169. Opposed, 0. Abstaining, 1. The combined calendar items have carried. All right. I'll get the other vote later. Joan Caldwell, Chair of District 10.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Item 14, the 2015 Open Space Plan, is advisory. Let's be very clear on that. It is, as has been said, a blueprint for things that we might do in the future, things we should seriously consider doing. However, the plan, which took quite some time to put together, arrived in our hands just two or three days before the first standing committee had an opportunity to look at it. The standing committee was Land Use, the same night Legislative and Rules. This plan affects not only private property, but it affects town-owned property. And you and I, representing the taxpayers, are kind of in charge of being sure that the town-owned property is put to its best use and protected in every way possible. So, protecting it with an ordinance or a deed restriction might not be a bad idea. But in looking at those predictions, we must also be sure that we do not do anything that in any way restricts our options or our use of the property in the future, because we're not in the position to go out and buy more property, assuming that God was willing enough to make some for us. We therefore have to be very, very careful and to exercise due diligence in going over the recommendations of this report, the findings, as they regard town property. To the best of my knowledge, the Education Committee, the Parks and Recreation, and the Public Works Committee did not really go into this in depth. I think one of them had a presentation or a broad-brush discussion, but I don't think they went into it in great depth. And yet, they have the oversight of substantial tracts of town-owned property. Therefore, it was the thinking of District 10 that we should delay this. We should put it off and give ourselves a chance to look at what the impact of the recommendations are toward town property. It had been my thought that we would put it off until June. However, at the request of one of the three committees I just mentioned, we are going to recommend and to make a motion to move it to September because they felt that the time just wasn't available to deal with it adequately between now and June with the budget before us. So, Mr. Moderator, I would like to say... And I might add, just before that, in going through the plan, and this is a personal observation, it has nothing to do with the district, and I'd like to make that distinction. In going through the report, I found something that I didn't understand. I'm not sure it's an error. It's just, I don't understand it. I found that a large tract of land on the upper end of North Street, representing approximately 1,200 acres, is listed as private and unprotected. I believe the property is Conyers Farm, and that is wrong. Conyers Farm is deed-restricted, and it is deed-restricted not only to the residents there, but to the Town of Greenwich. We are a benefited party. Bruce Cohen and I wrote that deed restriction so that the Town of Greenwich would always have a vote in overturning the deed restriction if someone tried, and that the town was defined not as the Planning and Zoning Commission and not as the first selectman, but the RTM. Can you honestly believe that a majority of this body would overturn that deed restriction? I doubt it. The resolution of District 10 is... District 10 moves to postpone Item 14, the 2015 Open Space Plan, to the September meeting for the purpose of allowing other standing committees, such as Education, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works, that have oversight of town property, to determine if the plan or any action taken under it might have a long-term negative impact or reduce the town's options. I so move.
All right. That is a motion to postpone offered on behalf of one of our districts, so it does not require a second, and it is now currently before us. This is a motion to postpone Item 14 to the September meeting for the purposes described. That motion to postpone is debatable. Now, let me just read to you. Debate is limited, and I will read from Robert's Rules. Debate is limited in that it must not go into the merits of the main question any more than is necessary to enable the Assembly to decide whether the main question should be postponed and to what time. So, discussion on the District 10 motion to postpone. Mr. Von Kaiseling, for what purpose do you rise?
...point of information. Mr. Moderator, am I correct in that this... For the RTM to adopt this, it takes a supermajority vote or a simple majority?
When you say "to adopt this," are you referring to the motion?
The... Excuse me. The main resolution. Is that considered a...
I believe it's a majority vote. Mr. Fox is here. Mr. Fox concurs. To adopt Item 14 on the merits requires a majority vote of those present and voting. All right. Discussion on the... Let me just take care of one housekeeping matter. I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were Items 1, 2, 4, 5, 8, and 15. Those in favor, 165. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 0. The consent calendar items have carried. All right. Discussion on the motion postponed. Denise Savageo, Conservation Director.
Good evening, and I will limit my comments to the motion, hopefully. Wanted to specifically address the issue that was brought up, and this had to do with town open space. The way that the open space is presented, as we indicated and as Ms. Caldwell indicated, does not impact any particular parcel. There is nothing in here that says we're going to do anything to any parcel. What it does say is that a committee, and it charges Planning and... Excuse me. Conservation and Parks and Recreation, the Board of Parks and Recreation and the Parks and Recreation Department, to look at town-owned open space, and not all town-owned land is considered open space. So, for example, land owned by Public Works may not be considered open space. All open-space land that's considered open space that's owned by the town is under the purview of Parks and Recreation. So, what it does say is that we will review those parcels. To review those parcels and to do any changes on them, whether it be putting a deed restriction on or whatever, would require us to go through the MI process, which would require going to the Board of Selectmen. It would require going to the Planning and Zoning, and then it would require coming to the RTM to implement that. So, there would be no changes to any parcel of land in terms of, you know, what we're doing. What this plan recommends, and it was recommended in the POCD, basically following the recommendations of the POCD, is that we continue to look at how we manage our Open Space Plan and to look at which parcels possibly should have permanent deed restrictions. The two that we identified as potential, some of what we consider the low-hanging fruit that we mentioned in the plan, but again, we would have to decide, you know, if this was the case or not, going through that whole MI process, was Greenwich Point. And we heard from some committees, like, "Well, let's do that right away. No one wants to lose Greenwich Point." And the other one was Babcock, and the reason we identified that one is because it protects our public drinking water supply. That said, there's nothing in the plan that says that we have to do that. Those are just the two we use as examples that we may want to consider. So, that's addressing specifically the motion of Parks and Recreation.
All right. Excuse me. There is a point of order that has been raised. Mr. Von Kaiseling, please state your point of order.
I believe that you said this had to be the topic of postponement and the question that was raised, but I believe that there was insufficient time for this to be digested by all the committees. While I appreciate what the lady is saying about the value of this plan itself, I don't believe that that, as you said, is before.
I did say that discussion on this motion to postpone is limited to a certain extent. It is not prohibited to go into the merits. You may go into the merits to the extent necessary, and I had heard that one of the reasons for postponement was this concern that the speaker is now addressing. So, in my estimation, this is fair debate. So, Savageo.
And just in conclusion, we did present this to the Board of Parks and Rec... Well, first of all, Parks and Recreation, the Department of Parks and Recreation was given copies of the plan. We had a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation on the committee, with Bruce Spayman serving on the Open Space Plan Committee. Parks and Rec was fully briefed on this. The Board, we brought this to the Board of Parks and Recreation, so they reviewed it. And we also went to the RTM Board of Parks and Recreation and made a full presentation, just like we did at all of the other committees. Because it wasn't referred to them, they decided not to take a vote, but we made a full presentation to them, just like we did at every other committee with the same length of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone Item 14 to our September meeting. Arlene Lamazo, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Mr. Moderator and members of the body, as an individual, I would have to say that the document came to me much, much too late because we were already into our committee meetings, and we were preparing for those, and we just didn't have time, or I didn't have time, to read the entire document. So, I'm not prepared to vote as an individual. However, as Chairman of the Public Works Committee, I would also have to say that I don't know to what extent the committee has had a chance to read it, but I think the committee would like to discuss it once it's been read at our June meeting, and therefore, we would vote on it at the September meeting. Thank you.
Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening again. Fellow members, I support open space totally. I also support the District 10 motion to postpone, and I recommend it to you. Here are three reasons. Number one, precedent. We have done this before. When the previous Open Space Plan came to the RTM in the spring of 2002, the RTM postponed it until September. The vote to postpone was 139 in favor, 11 opposed, with 1 abstention. We formed a committee to study the plan. I served on that committee with Donald Landsman and Fred DeCarroll. We recommended changing the plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission accepted our recommendation, and in September, the RTM adopted a revised plan. So, there is precedent for the RTM to postpone to allow time for the RTM to recommend improvements to make a better plan. If you vote to postpone tonight, I will volunteer to serve on an RTM committee to develop recommendations to improve this plan. We will report our recommendations to you and work with the Conservation Commission to bring you a better plan in September. Number two, no urgency. Until we adopt this new plan, the 2002 plan remains in place, and this new plan is virtually the same as the 2002 plan. The new plan has the same 21% goal for protected open space, the same compelling case for increasing open space, the same scoring system for evaluating potential acquisitions, and a very similar list of implementation tasks. So, there's no harm in leaving the old plan in place for another five months. Postponing this plan does not prevent the town from protecting more open space or better-managing open space. There's no urgency to adopt this plan. And number three, good governance. When the RTM adopts a plan, it is directing the town, including the first selectman and the BET, to take action. The RTM is a serious arm of government. But what has happened in the 13 years since the RTM adopted the 2002 plan? Did we make progress toward the 21% goal? Did we permanently protect Greenwich Point or Babcock? Were large properties scored? Did the town acquire any new high-scoring open space? Did the first selectman budget sufficient staff and other resources to implement the plan? Were funds put into the CIP capital plan to acquire open space? Did the BET devise a... Did the BET devise a way to act quickly when a high-scoring parcel of open space became available on the market? In fact, the town did not acquire or protect any important open space because of the 2002 plan. After 13 years, we are no closer to the 21% goal. Furthermore, since the RTM adopted the 2002 plan, 74 properties of 10 acres or larger were sold, about 700 acres were lost to subdivision, so the 21% goal is more difficult to achieve than in 2002. Less open space is available. Nine large properties are currently on the market. And today, there is no provision in the CIP, our capital plan, for open space. We have no strategy to act quickly, and in fact, the previous First Selectmen disbanded the Land Acquisition Committee. Tonight, you are being asked to adopt a nearly identical plan with the same lofty goal, with similar implementation tasks, but no dates, no commitment to implement, no commitment to put resources in the operating budget or in the capital budget. Does Greenwich deserve a serious, realistic plan, or just another plan collecting dust on a shelf? In sum, there is precedent for the RTM to postpone a proposed open space plan. There is no urgency to adopt a plan, and we owe it to ourselves and to our constituents in the interest of good governance to get this plan right. Fellow members, I support open space and will vote for this motion, and I urge you to do so also. Thank you.
Paul Settlemeyer, District 2.
I'd like to limit my comments to the motion before us, which is the motion to postpone, not the merits of the plan. I believe that the open space plan was well-advertised by the Open Space Committee. They held public meetings. It was thoroughly discussed, including discussions before planning and zoning. I'm surprised to hear that people were not aware of the plan. Under the leadership of the Chairman of the Land Use Committee, the Land Use Committee started discussing this plan a month before our last meeting. There was a very active email discussion of people's opinions. There was a very active discussion at the Land Use Committee. There were supporters, and there were people that were against it. The vote by the Land Use Committee with all 12 districts was 11 in favor, one against. You heard the review done by the Legislative and Rules Committee with all 12 districts present. Your representatives were there on the committee. Their vote was 12-0. I think there was ample time for review of this plan. I think it was carefully reviewed by the committees it was assigned to, and I recommend a vote of no on the motion to defer. Thank you.
Bernard Schneider, District 12.
Thank you, members of the RTM. I'm an alternate on land use, and I will support the motion to postpone of District Most of you received the plan on Thursday before Easter and Passover weekend. There was not enough time for the RTM to adequately, as a group collectively, review and make a decision on the plan. The moderator, having spoken to Attorney Fox, said, "Under the rules of this organization, here tonight, we have no authority to amend the plan. Take it or leave it." Prudence and good government requires us not to vote on the plan today. Peter Berg is the individual in this room who I think we can agree knows and has been involved in land use for the longest time and representing the interests of the town. I think his judgment is entitled to real deference. Joan Caldwell has been elected by this organization as moderator pro tem, and what it means at its heart is that office comes to respect for her personal judgment on the best interests of the organization and the town. I think her judgment should be respected as well. No harm will come from postponing discussion of the plan, to have an orderly and proper discussion. So I recommend a vote to postpone the plan. Thank you.
Further discussion on the District 10 motion to postpone. Mr. Von Keisling, District 8.
Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen. I think, just to make sure that I'm not mispositioned, I think my credentials in open space and conservation have been well-earned. I fought with Charlie Upham in the '80s to create a land bank and a number of other issues through the years. I'm very much in favor of open space and also very much aware of its critical nature in the health of this town. But we're not talking about open space here, we're talking about procedure. There's the old expression, measure twice, cut once. People seem to think, well, this is just a kind of an idea, it's not really that important, doesn't have much guidance, it's a nice thought. Well, it may be for some of the people out there, but for our land use agencies, this is the document on open space, which guides every one of them, inland, wetlands, P&amp;Z, Board of Appeals, on what to do on a case-by-case basis. When you yourself come before them with an individual application and how they rule on it, they are guided and bound in many ways by this very document. So if this document is not that strong, or is that frivolous, or whatever like that, we're making a very bad step in our responsibility of protecting the town's interests and our individual constituents' interests. So if we need to rush to judgment, what's wrong with the plan? If the plan was strong, it should be able to sustain any kind of inspection and thought and discussion. It's certainly, we started this process on the open space plan in, I believe, 2010, four years ago. It's true, as the previous speaker said, we'd been well-aware that this is coming down the pipeline, but we were not aware in what form it would reach our desk. As you know, in Greenwich, there's many changes between the time something's proposed and the time it arrives in the RTM for action. So many of us were not really worried, were not really prepared, because we were not thinking about dealing with this document until we could see the real facts in front of us that we had to deal with in black and white, that really would guide and rule the town's business. So I think to say that we had plenty of warning is really not to the point, and three days over a holiday doesn't make it. I find it rather uncomfortable for me. I seem to be in full agreement with Joan Caldwell, Peter Berg, and Peter Alexander also. So there must be something to what we're saying, that this is not baked yet. If all of these people say we should think about it a little longer, and what's the harm? Thank you.
Mark Pruner, District 10.
For a moment, I was worried that I was going to be in agreement with Chris Von Keisling, but luckily, I'm not. The plan here is that. It's a plan, and it's to guide folks. Any of the major issues that are involved are very likely to come back to the RTM. If we're going to be buying a major piece of property for open space, that's going to come back here. If there are ordinances that need to be approved, most of those are going to come back here, too. So to delay this further, I actually am concerned, and I think Peter's ideas, in a perfect world, are a good one, but he wants to put in deadlines and appropriations and other specificities that we would need to act on. And I think that's very dangerous for us to do. It potentially will cost the town a lot of money, and I think what we have here is a good plan, and we should vote no on this and approve the plan tonight, because I am afraid that after the study and the various interest groups get involved in it, we will end up with something that's less likely to pass and would cost the town a lot more money. So I would recommend you vote against postponing this tonight. Thank you.
Eric Brower, member of the Conservation Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. I'm Eric Brower, Vice Chairman of the Conservation Commission, and as the former Chairman of the Town Properties Committee and the Town Land Acquisition Committee as a predecessor to that. Was involved with the purchase of the Pomerance-Tuckman property, which you're all familiar with, and I think understand the detailed process that went through in order to make that happen, and it certainly wasn't a mandate from any prior plan. I'd like to say I think that Denise Savage with our committee did a wonderful job of promoting this publicly. It's unfortunate if some members were not aware of it as much as they would like to, and I won't speak to trying to force a decision against having everybody well-informed, but I think the concerns for the delay are not well-founded. As Denise explained, these are not regulations that are being proposed, it's a guideline. And certainly, the town and every department in this body would have the opportunity to review in detail anything that came out of a recommendation from this report. So if the decision is to delay, we'd certainly look forward to meaningful participation during that delay so that it doesn't get delayed again further in September. So the committee and Denise were here to answer your questions and were with you in the event that you do choose to delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the District 10 motion to postpone. All right. This, again, being procedural, in the first instance, I will call for a voice vote. If you are in favor of postponing Item 14 to our September call, you should vote in favor of the motion to postpone. If you are against postponing, you should vote no. All those in favor of the District 10 motion to postpone Item 14 to our September meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion is carried. All right. That is the last item of business to come before us tonight. And hearing no objection, this meeting now stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.